Okay, so I just did a little quick slideshow presentation to kind of go over how budget's done. Hopefully answer some basic questions and then if you guys have some more questions. So, here we go. Budget is a chance for the city to plan both revenues and expenditures for the coming year. City Code and Gatsby require the city to adopt a budget prior to the start of fiscal year. The city is not allowed to budget more expenditures than the revenue we anticipate to receive in the year. Government entities fund accounting. This requires us to separate accounts for different functions. Most city operations fall under the general fund. Revenues from utilities and their related expenses are accounted for in the water and sewer fund. The city also has a transportation fund to account for the sales tax passed in 2000 and will be adding a capital improvements fund to account for the sales tax approved this year. The budget process, step one is soliciting information from the department from the department heads regarding future needs. Step two is calculation of projected carryover, estimated revenues and expenditures. Step three is putting all the data together. Step four is the Board of Alderman and Mayor meeting and determining the financial plan of the coming year. Now, we're going to talk specifically about the general fund because it's the biggest fund and not specific to certain activities. The general fund includes all departments except for the water and sewer fund. The water and sewer fund had the ability to raise rates when expenses exceed revenues. The general fund doesn't have that luxury, increases when allowed generally require voter approval. Oh, thank you. I was trying to stay out of the way. I didn't plan for myself, so. Carryover, and this is a pie chart for the fiscal year that we're in right now. Carryover is the amount that was not spent in the current year's budget that is available to be budgeted in the next year. This year, the carryover was 29% of the projected revenue. Historically, carryover has been between 17 and 32% of the revenue. And I've just did a chart for the last 10 years on several different things today. And this one just shows the carryover kind of jumps up and down. This is budgeted amounts that each department did not spend. Carryover includes the cash in the bank at the end of the fiscal year, plus the receivables at the end of the fiscal year, minus the payables at the end of the fiscal year. The amount paid to the city for sales tax by Department of Revenue in both October and November are considered part of the previous fiscal year as all amounts do for property taxes and other receivables do but not pay at the end of the year. Carryover versus reserve. Carryover is a revenue account. Reserve is a line item in the expenditure listing that you do not intend to use. Last year, we did no reserve, so I didn't bother to do a chart of that because you don't have to do a reserve. A res- okay, sorry. A reserve is the amount that you'd not tend to spend in the current year. Without a carryover in fiscal year 9/30/2012, which is the current year, the general fund would have had only $100,000 to pay for expenditures beyond employee-related expenses. By the time we paid our city attorney, auditor, and commercial insurance policy, there would have been nothing left to pay for fuel supplies or anything else. Sorry.
So, you're saying that from the 2011 through the 2012, if we had not had a carryover, we would have been in a deficit situation?
Yes. Carryover is a needed part of city government. It's not normal in normal operating businesses, but it's how cities go from one year to the next. Because those- and we're reliant on departments not spending it if they don't need it. Does that make sense? Okay. Now, I'm going to talk about revenues just quickly. The largest source of revenue for the city general fund is taxes. The biggest portion of our taxes is from sales tax, which is 63% of the overall budget. 65% of that 63% is sales tax. So, sales tax is essentially our big thing. The reason I discuss this is because sales tax is stagnant. It's dropped from a high in 2007 of $700,000. It's now $600,000 a year and it's stayed there for the last four years.
So, I get a quick question.
Yes.
On page one of our budget, it shows negative $66,650. That's- we spent $66,650 more than we brought in.
For the next fiscal year, we need to cut $66,000 to balance the budget. And I have a few ideas at the end of this on, just based on some stuff that you had said. I wanted to do.
Okay, now, theory is the carryover is something that we continually carry every year. We just pass it from one budget to the next without the notion of spending it. But this year, we dipped into it. Is that correct?
It's less than it has been in some previous years. Let me go back there.
Did we spend more than we brought in, I guess, mightily?
Yes, we spent, it would be $175,000 more than what we brought in because our carryover has dropped from $400,000 to- and I don't have these- I don't have the numbers in front of me. I'm going off of the slides. I think that was in the $200,000 range, so we've dropped about $200,000 over what we brought in, which is what we were carrying reserves. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing because that's what we had back in 2004, so it's not- I mean, we probably got a little high at carrying over $500,000 from one year to the next. Okay. So, like I said, sales taxes relate is flat. The biggest expense for the city is human resources. This is both your wages paid to your employees and your benefits. This is health insurance, retirement, uniforms, social security. All of that is grouped into that. For the current year, human resources accounts for 65% of your expenditures. And this is just a chart I did to show you guys how much it's- the raise has been in running, you know, that's the cost of people too. And it's gone up pretty significantly from 2002. Okay. Any questions about that? Because that's kind of the end of the general fund.
Did you add FTEs? Was that why the jump?
What was that? I'm sorry.
Did you add new FTEs? Was that why there was a jump for the person up?
Um. I think maybe some part-time employees were added. I don't think we added any full-time employees last year. Does anybody remember? I think it was more part-time help that we added on.
But we did add part-time guy. Well, we added what we replaced. Roger was down guy and we sent him over to Cus.
Yeah. Okay. The water and sewer fund, and this is just- I had kind of showed this, the first draft of this to Andrew and I hadn't really touched on the water and sewer fund, so I'm just going to lightly touch on it. The water and sewer fund is counted separately from all other funds. It is supposed to operate like a business, whereas the general fund is reliant on that carryover. You don't have to be so reliant on carryovers in the water and sewer fund. This fund accounts for the utility billing and the related expenses of distribution of water and sewer. As a condition of the sewer bonds, rates for the sewer portion of the utility bill are reviewed every year to ensure that enough money is collected, sorry, is collected from customers to pay the expense of sewer system, including all bond payments. This review is done automatically by me like March or April or May. And the only time you guys see that is, I usually put a note at the end of my report, but if we have to do a rate increase or a rate decrease, then that comes to you guys in the form of an ordinance. But it is done automatically every year. A reserve is desired in this fund because of major unplanned repairs. I know about seven years ago, they had a pump that went out and I think it cost like $30,000 to repair it. So, and we had no- that's why a reserve is kind of more important here than it is in the general fund. Okay, so that is the end of the water and sewer fund. And this is just kind of my wrap-up of where we're at on those sheets for you guys. Because of the reduced projected carryover, we're $66,500 short of being able to balance the general fund. Andrew suggested that we take maintenance of streets and move these activities to transportation fund in order to free up some general fund. According to Roger, his department would spend the equivalent of one person maintaining the streets. That's pushing snow, salting, mowing right-ofaways, filling potholes. So, to move Kenny home and some supplies that I went line item by line item from, that would free up $51,500 if you all wanted to do that. The city attorney has said that we can't take equipment or vehicles out of the transportation fund. So, that leaves us needing to cut $15,000 out of the general fund budget in order to balance it. And that is with no capital improvements.
And I don't want to- I hate to question our city attorney, but I don't know if that's accurate. I think I have been told by MML that anything that's transportation-related, we can purchase out of transportation fund.
And I specifically came back today and asked him about supplies and equipment. I'll get those emails out for you guys because that's- I just wanted to let you know what he said.
Okay.
Because I specifically asked him about vehicles and equipment today. And he did respond back to me, so I'll get copies of those for you here in just a second. Okay, so the water and sewer fund has a projected reserve of $118,820. Just wanted to point out that with the deficit, I did not put any capital wants into the budget that you guys are looking at that's short. And those are all on that other sheet for you guys to consider. As far as the capital improvement sales tax, I'm not sure if you guys want to do that budget yet. We won't actually start receiving that money until December because it goes into effect in October. And I know Andrew's got that meeting scheduled for people to give their input on what they think that money should be spent for. And then the transportation fund, I'm just kind of sketchy on how to finish up the budget for that. And so, I just wanted to throw out there that it just needs to be estimated. Cantrell's contract does go through December, so I'm assuming if you guys finish Locust Street in October, you'll want to continue doing other sections of sidewalks. And that is it. Any other questions? Now, it's all you guys. I told you everything I know.
What's- and I'm still having a little bit of trouble wrapping my brain. How much did we spend? And I know this current fiscal year isn't over, but how much did we bring in and how much did we spend? And we're in 2011, 2012, right?
Well, I can't tell you exactly how much we spent. I can tell you how I figured the carryover balance.
Well, I'm not worried about the carryover. I'm just wondering what our total expenditures projected is and what our total income projected is. Good way to charge. You was a math major in college.
I don't have to plan on the sales tax being down this year by good. Even with the increase, our flat taxes, we haven't asked the sales tax bond. Our sales tax will be down 10%, 15%. Mr. Al will have a major variation this year, major. Cars, car sales, cars sales will be down. It's just going to be down because this, when you're a rural community like we are, we can anticipate sales tax to be down. Jump sideways. It now has a tremendous amount of variation.
They've been, they were up for the last quarter, though, weren't they?
They were. This is just now setting in, too. This is asking for us all. Yeah, it's really setting in. People are selling all their cattle in any situation.
Okay, this is based on my carryover figures, pulling them back out. You budgeted revenues. Do you want me to include the carryover left from the year before?
I just want to know how much we brought in or will anticipate bringing in for 2011, 2012 and what we anticipate to spend for 2011, 2012.
Okay, including the carryover, that's what I'm asking. Do you want me to include that in there?
Without any carryover. I just want to know what we brought in, what we spent.
We're down $256,000.
You brought in $1,093,163 and you're going to spend $1,602.87.
$1,602?
It's $450,000.
Well, they told me to leave that carryover out there.
So, we spent half a million more than we spent about a third more than we brought in?
Uh huh. Because of that carryover from the year before last. Because it was $451,000.
And we spent it all?
You haven't spent all of the carryover, no.
Okay.
The projected carryover balance for next year is $200,000.
Okay, so we brought in almost 1.1 million.
Yes.
And we spent 1.6 million.
Yes. The carryover was $451,000. What year? The carryover is $451,000, yes.
So, we had negative carryover?
Okay, so, well, this is part of the problem. I, yeah. Every time I run the numbers, I'm getting something different. I can show you what we have, but as far as getting new numbers for you, your proposed budget for the next year, I mean, I guess I'm not sure what you're looking for.
We both want to know. I don't know what you think your anticipated revenues are.
For the next fiscal year?
For the next fiscal year.
$1,200,000, it's the first column, $1,233,500.
And you're saying that as we stand today?
Based on current year's spending, yes.
Right. We anticipate spending a million three?
Yes.
So, $66,000 more, so.
Yes.
Now, in this, this is the general.
This is the general fund.
So, this does not include the transportation fund or missing trade of water and sewer. That's everything except those two items, you know, right?
Yes.
So, we have to, and we can't. The sewer and water expenses stand by itself. They can only be spent for sewer and water projects and that, right?
Yes, yes. It's supposed to be a- you're supposed to run it like a business, your sewer and water fund.
And the transportation fund?
It's just your sales tax money and it's supposed to be accounted for separately for transportation purposes.
Not with it, is it? Of the $600,000, was that all the sales tax money?
That was all the general fund, the 1% general fund sales tax.
And that all goes to transportation?
No, that- the transportation is a half a percent.
They get half?
They get a separate little pool of money.
So, they get, so, out of anticipated sales tax, $600,000 is that approximately? You're not counting the new sales tax I'm talking about right now?
Yes.
You anticipate, we anticipate that to be $600,000. And out of that, half of it goes to transportation and half of it goes to general?
No, sorry, that's where I messed up. It's not, it would be $900,000 between the two funds.
No, but you're talking about the brand-new sales tax for last.
No, the 1% for the general fund is $600,000 and then there's a half a cent for transportation, which is another $300,000. And then the new sales tax-
Is on top of that.
Is going to be on top of that, yes.
So, we're talking basically approximately, if everything is, it will be a million two in sales tax revenue.
Yes, yes.
The diversity is with 1 to 3 major. But the problem- If everything is right.
Problem is, as I read this, we're $66,000 in the hole, but that's on the assumption that we're going in to the following year with zero reserve.
The reserve can be zero. What you have to rely on is the department's not buying things they don't need.
Right, but what I'm saying is we're $66,000 in the hole with $200,000 reserve. So, if we spend all of that, then we totally used up the reserve, too.
Yes, I mean, we don't have to budget a reserve, but we have to have that carryover. We have to have people spend money they don't absolutely need.
I mean, carryover.
We're dependent on them not spending every single dime of the budget.
So, when you, when you did the budget for the various departments of the, this million three, was an estimate of what you proposed, right?
It was just based on current year's spending.
Current year's spending.
Yes, it was based on current year's spending as of July, I think 15th was when I did that.
Wow.
Maybe the 24th, I was going to think on there.
With this wish that you gave me, the department had requests.
Yes.
Can you tell me how much that figure is to?
That is $455,064 for everything that I've got listed on there.
So, but now, out of the department summary, of course, we don't have. And this, and this million three is payrolls, et cetera, everything else. But on $455,000, that's not, that's not have the payrolls, the insurance, all the-
That's, that's everything for that item. So, if they're asking for new help, it does include everything attached to hiring new employees.
Still entirely confused on how carryover works.
You should.
Yes.
So, this is our estimate of what we're going to go. I mean, it is an estimate on what we're going to bring in, correct?
Right.
All right, and this was last year's, what we brought in. And this is supposed to be what we brought in thus far?
As of-
As of last-
With a month, with a month of the way.
Okay, what's this all about? I mean.
That's from the year before. That's-
So, that's what we've been then-
That's what they didn't use in '11 that came forward to this year.
Okay, so it's like that's the current balance for-
And we use $200,000 of that to this year.
So, the police department basically requested $96,000. That's what they requested.
I think we don't have to see inventory of what they had.
Well, what I'm saying is you take that $96,000 plus-
Two emails from Travis. The most recent one, I thought.
And that goes together.
They don't, they need it never.
They need a lot of things, you know, they need those seven machine guns, like I made a hole in it. They bought a $4,000 computer program last year that they had to jump. Oh, yeah. They couldn't handle the program that was in the budget that he purchased. It was $4,000. The computers they had down there couldn't handle it. He was bigger than the police department. Need a very small town police department. Have they done an inventory yet, police department?
Well, you know, we, the city has only been required to keep an inventory for about five years now. And the only things that get on the inventory is the large item purchases. So, yes, they are on the inventory. It's just something that we have to keep record-wise to give to the auditor every year. And they review it as I, I mean, I print it out after we do a new additions and then they review it to make sure they still have everything. But it doesn't include anything under $500 value on that inventory.
I see on this, repays issue 52, I showed my earlier $200,000 bracket. Repays issue two, it's left blank.
Yeah, and I, I mean, they all gave me sheets and I can make copies of those for you guys later of what they wanted with their explanations. I just tried to summarize it real quick on the one sheet where you could look at it all together. Is there a reason why they're not present to give access? I thought that the ordinance said that we would confer with the- This is just a first meeting.
Could there be much grant for these sheets? Is there any after? Or is it everything like that?
I don't remember, can we budget anything to come to grant?
Yeah, I mean, it has-
I might not agree on that.
Huh?
I might not agree on that. It's nice.
Yeah, I mean, I just have to ask Eric. The only grant that we had come up this year, besides a few small ones for the police department, was that small one for equipment, so.
But you can't operate a city on your own grant. You have to operate, you have to, we have to operate on what we've got and what we're going to spend. And if we get it, great, uh, and if we don't, we're lost because it can't be figured in or I can't. I don't see how you could figure in a possibility of a grant. Worst, I'm trying to figure out, you know, get $10,000 to came to do a part with a chance of a grant if it comes for what you want.
I'd like to see Roger get a string sweeper, you know, when you pull down a tractor or something like that.
He needs two things. Now, he can eat with the five that he's back.
Oh, that backhoe last month of the year.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Yeah.
He needs a couple trucks, cut-off saws. He's going to have to, some things that are not here. And he needs a tractor with a sidearm fire because I, we should not, as a city, enforce the weed ordinance against the city if it's the citizens of Buffalo if we can't maintain our land. And it'll come after me. If you, if I've got weeds on my right-of-way, they're three foot tall, you don't ask me. I'll tell you where to go. You know, you got to take care, you got to enforce your own. So, there are some things that he's got to have to make us being able to enforce all of this as a law weeds.
That cutter he's got dangerous now.
Let's realize, we're looking at one. If we get it from Green County, it is just an if. A tractor and a side cutter all in one that belongs to Green County. If they're going to sell us surplus equipment, but I don't know how they're getting this done, but they have offered to let the city of Buffalo buy it. Now, how they do that, I don't know. I mean, we're not going to argue with the gift or some matter. But if they can buy that for $15,000, $18,000 or the tractor, that's because I live at sidecutters and they're 70 and 80 by themselves.
Is that the end of the city or what, presumably $6,000, you can't, I don't know, just I'm just asking.
Well, I would assume that if we went to buy it, we'd get to chunks of the house. If it's over $10,000, we would have to find a comparison. You know, after, or this is what I think. After looking and going through the theory to buy the truck that we talked about last week, it's really not a problem. All we got to do is get on the, kind of this blue book and find the truck and the printer and print it off and here's what this one cost and here's what we're willing to pay. That will justify our expenditures. It doesn't have to, we don't have to advertise for bids.
That's all, I didn't know.
No, that's, very well.
I'm not the attorney.
Right, right, and this is what he told us we had to do to justify the sale, was to justify the price. He didn't say anything about bids. He said justify the price.
Right.
So, justification can come from, from there.
Truck's cheap.
Oh, yeah. I'm like, well, I know what the bed, a bed like that costs $18,000 by itself. But that just, you know, you know.
That may sound stupid, definitely, so it's not bed for $5,000 or buy a truck.
Well, I think that would be kind of a big voice in Jeff City, but probably.
What's the matter with proof that we're not 88?
Let's see the proof clearly.
You know more about that than I do.
Yeah, we need a chair.
We need a gone.
For the bike.
For the kitty paw and-
We need a gone.
Chair.
That's right, we need to be-
For the people, we'll chair.
We have to go out in July and give that go away.
He did, at the beginning of the year. I don't know whatever came of it.
I've never seen a full, you know, Disney World at 4,000 full down there. I never bought a chair.
Next year, we'll- The government did.
They don't have it in this world.
Next year, next year.
It's only the age. Disney World will be in December.
It's not a public facility.
And then why? Because they might, they might have better means to getting one of those than-
We will come back.
They're about $6,000. Question is, do an E2 up from one to the kitty paw or the big foot?
We'll have to, we're not ready, we're going to have to.
Oh, Bobby and I talked about getting one that would turn and slip on service boats, but. I'm still having trouble wrapping my tiny brain about, or around the carryover. And I'm trying to get theoretically to where I understand it. Carryover is like that $2 bill in the wallet that we never spend, right?
Yes.
That we're holding on for a rainy day.
Carryover comes from places worthless.
Say I got $20 in a $20 bill in my wallet and a $2 bill. And that $20 I'll spend on a regular basis and I'll earn a little bit money and money and I'll put another 20 back in there. The $2- The two dollar bill I never spend. I got twenty-two dollars in my wallet, but I'll never spend that two dollar bill.
Unless you have, after new emergency.
So what you're telling us is this year, we spend a dollar of that two dollar bill, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the carryover comes from places, if you just kind of look down through the list, at this point, when I did the budget, it was either seventy-six or seventy-nine percent. It just comes from those little bitty lines where people didn't spend all the money, fifty-nine percent. They're gonna throw some money back into the carryover. All these little, little places where people didn't need something, they didn't spend. So, you, I mean. Let's see there, this oh nine, twenty-ten, is this carryover down here, is this the balance? That's not how much you're budgeting that you're gonna take out of the budget, but that's the balance of the carryover, correct? That, that is what we had left in the previous year's budget to go into the, into that year's budget. So this would say that this is three hundred and seventy thousand dollars was what was budgeted to go into. It was money that we didn't spend in the oh eight, oh nine budget, that we got to reallocate in the oh nine, ten. And then in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, it went up to four hundred and eighty-five thousand. Yes. And then it went down in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. I just don't understand this, this one. And here, I got these numbers that Andrew asked for. The revenue, not including the carryover, we brought in that number, we've spent that much, based on projections to get us through this fiscal year. Um, he didn't turn, I mean, if they didn't turn anything in, then that's, I mean. Huh?
If they did, if they did, extend your summer, summer department, then you need to do, they got the department sixty-two thousand dollars, so you gotta do this.
Welcome.
Twenty thousand dollars, I don't see, zero, say, you know, spent seventy-two thousand dollars, it's not going to this twenty-fifty-five.
No, that, yeah, that's, this is a completely separate list of what they want. It's not included in this.
No, it's, we could, we could take the adage, we could replace it with this. Airport.
Yes.
These are.
These, these are just extra things they wanted that I did not include when I was putting it together originally.
Right.
Just, we call it Christmas lights, too.
Yeah, right.
And we hope to not spend one percent, so what I'm carrying.
We'll get it out, I'll just go to the place. Okay, so I guess my question is, where do you guys wanna go from here? Um, do you want to meet with the individual departments? Um, I mean, we've done that in the past, last year, we didn't do that, um, so.
Can they get a time for either Christmas one, I don't think I have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've. The ordinance says that we're supposed to meet with them. Says, how do I go?
Well, thank you.
It says that, um. Oh, did you, I'm, sorry, I thought I passed my forehand. I've got extras, though. The city board, the department requests to make their final revenue estimates for the coming fiscal year, will confer with department, department heads to discuss these requests, so. No, you can't. I need this. When I look up yours, and it does say three bits for any purchase.
There's gonna be, we've got to tweet that.
Well, I think we'll then, first, argue why we need.
And I mean, most of the things, I mean, are like, I mean, unless we cut a department, I mean, I mean, we could go, we could go radical. If you guys wanna close the recycling center, you know, that's gonna be fifty thousand dollars you could save. I'm not saying to do that, but.
Right.
Unless you do something radical, or you guys figure out something else, we don't have any money to spend on the capital wish list, and so it's almost gonna have to go to the big items begging for part of the capital sales tax money that we're not gonna start collecting till December.
Let me ask you this, maybe you're looking at the police department's wish list. If we were gonna call the same, to go over the place tomorrow, with this wish list. And also have actually what his payrolls and his fuel costs, and other things cost us last year, so you can really see where we're at as far as his budget is consumed, in the same way that the fire department. I wanna know what they spent, where they spent. I understand whether one of their own trucks, and the long-term fire department always wants more than any city can give, uh, police departments, so is there a way that when we meet next, or sometime, that you could give us a department, private department, that's in the.
You want like a list of all of the, everything they've purchased for the year?
Well, not, not the small items. I'm, I'm saying that if he spent, uh, so much, I need to really see what the labor, what his labor cost was, and what he, uh, what the total for the department is. If our department is, is forty-seven thousand, ours wants his one paid part. Is that, because he's the only one here, but I assume in, in this budget, that included his salary, is that right?
Yes.
That's a new one, right?
He wants an addition, he wants a firefighter cap.
He wants a thirty-three thousand dollar new one. That's nice, I'm glad I asked that question.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe Mr. Wayne?
I think he, he volunteered, is that what, that what, I, I think he's wanting a paid firefighter to be there.
Yeah, when he's not there. Two fourths of that.
That's right. Yes.
Did you have fire, so need, cross from there?
Down there?
They sure did. What was it?
Someone said no fire.
What, what was it said on that?
Across the creek, that air, new park.
They set the brush?
They set that for, they, 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 I'll just walk away from other field. He was really, I almost got the hell out of September, it stopped. I don't really have that now.
I heard a car, I heard a car up there.
Maybe, I think we need to take your figures.
Uh huh.
And anticipated income, and then go through, and try that, and see what money we have.
Okay.
If we don't have enough, we can, and pull in the essentials, and make sure we take care of all of the essentials, and we're gonna have to set a reasonable carryover, and build that right into it.
That's what we used to do.
Well, I mean, you're, you're talking, if, if you wanna do a reserve, I mean, the carryover isn't something you budget into the next year.
Call it a reserve.
Yeah, a reserve, you can, you budget a reserve in if you want a reserve.
But I think we need to find out. Somewhere along the line, we've got all pretty heavy on departments that are spending twice, you know, what, uh, airport, airport total, two hundred percent?
Yeah, but that's fifty-four hundred dollars is what we've got over on that.
Well, it can't be, well, it's still, it's still a percentage, not a, not a dollar amount. It's a percentage, but we need to look at the percentage thing. Why did, why did it run? Do we know why, right? Two hundred man's buildings, it wasn't anticipated, should've been anticipated. Everybody saw the building, you know, somewhere down the line, we knew, the city knew we was gonna have to make those buildings. They couldn't stay like that all, but we didn't, they didn't put anything in to, to take care of it. The same thing is, we can walk out here and look straight up at that tower, and we know those two water towers are gonna have to be repaired. We can't let the infrastructure of the town deteriorate and wake up some morning, but not have enough money to pay anything. Sidewalks and streets and everything is wonderful, but you still have to supply the two basic services to the people of Buffalo, and that's syrup and water. Those functions have got to be done before you do anything else. And if, if, if the water tank is in danger, it has to be repaired. I mean, I'm saying that because I'm getting tired of looking at the trash on it, and, and the mold on it, and.
But, but we have a different budget for that, and that's separate from here.
I understand, but it's still part of the infrastructure that we've got to plan on preserving. You know, we gotta look here, one of these days, this thing's gonna fall right down on administration's head. And we've got to be looking forward to some of these things, and not just, you know, take it in and spend it. Now, just because you've got it in your hip pocket, just because you've got the two dollars in your hip pocket, uh, you may need to spend it, and then we got nothing. It's nice to add the two dollars.
Maybe, what, what, what is our, our percentage of carryover every year? Like on, on page one.
It varies. It can be, this year was twenty-nine percent, seventeen to thirty-two, in the ten years that I hold for the, for that.
Okay, so, so last year coming into this year was twenty-nine percent?
Yes.
And, and with two hundred thousand, we're looking at what percent?
Sixteen percent.
So that's gonna be as worse than we've ever done.
Well, actually, I think we're at that same level in oh four.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think those police cars demonstrate that a band-aid, uh, is the best way to proceed, and we might have things in terms of maybe a little less stuff, and get a little, I'm not saying buy a new car, but maybe get one.
Little tech gear, a little better.
A little better, because if you end up with nothing, and those two cars.
Didn't have to spend, didn't have to spend forty thousand dollars, you know, to fully quit, you know.
Early, okay, we went out the same day, that night, went out the same day.
One in reverse.
I said, that's, that's, that's probably the same day.
And that hard Chevrolet, who was going back, that's what we called it, so they'll pick it up, and they'll, they'll pick it, that'll cost us.
Your cell service.
I don't know, can I look through the wish list here, this one, exactly that wish list, I mean, I guess sometimes.
Well, but there are practical, practical things, just like Jeff said. Look at the fire department, the two Scott Carvin SCVA cylinders. Chief Higgins came to me and said, Andrew, we have eight of them, I think it's eight. And he said, they all went bad one year, and we had, we had to buy eight brand new ones, and it was a huge burden that was thrown on us once. He said, what I'd like to do is maybe come up with two of them a year.
That's, that's a good idea.
That way, we're not hit at once.
You know, we won't have forty-one, so far achieved, we, we, we certainly, we may not be that, uh, a thermal imaging camera, that's, that's a wish list, you know, that's.
I thought we had one of them.
But there are some things we do need to think about.
Four sections of hose, if you need hose, right, buy a hose. You know, you gotta have the essentials to run the fire. If you need four, four sections of hose to put on that truck, you know, I'm sure there won't be jerking it off, and it's split on.
I'm pretty sure we've got this, he's got a thermal, you know.
It may be a replacement.
Most of the things Roger has asked for within his, but when you look at last, at his budget, uh, side cutting more, a couple new weed eaters, uh, cut off saw, he needs a cut off saw. If I could have new backhoe, that's fifty-six thousand dollars, but on the other hand. If it came to the push shelf situation, that we decided that we think the larger needing a backhoe for the future, we can least purchase a backhoe.
That's right.
Without buying it on the five-year. Debbie's, Debbie does a great job of saying, you know, I don't wanna buy anything on payments, and she's right, but sometimes you, you need to, to keep up the infrastructure of the equipment, you need your equipment. So, I mean, you, instead of giving fifty-six, you give twelve-five, or this year, twelve-five, because once it's in the legislature paper, you, uh, you got animal control, metal cabinet. I know an attorney down here that's got metal cabinets, I'm gonna let you see how good one is.
Roger told me, he can get one, he can get my, without a gun, he can get, he can get a little buddy gun.
Yeah, he can get, he can get a lot, and, and that's, that's fine, but we're also sitting here looking to the future to, to not wake up one of these days and have to buy a brand new fifty-six thousand dollar backhoe, or seventy thousand. You know, the pound building, the body repairs, the trucks, now.
It's not Russell, David.
Yeah.
Oh my God, I can't even rest on this.
I'll tell you what, where's Gus's? Now, Gus, where's Gus's?
William's, William's own Dodge, that's from Uncle Joe, back, on the cab, she's about had fit, about that, remember?
Yeah.
Remember that? They wanted to fake, tried to, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a truck.
I don't see.
Use conservation truck. It's in the second. The way it's water treated.
Oh, yeah. He went around the corner that day, and the truck and the door fell off his truck. That lost.
Who did?
Gus did.
That'll, but if you have a new one down there, it's gonna be eat up too.
I mean, I blew dollars.
Better one.
It's a ninety-six.
Down each one up.
It's a ninety-six model.
Yeah.
In bad shape.
We can buy him a bicycle.
That'd work.
You, you.
We just walk.
You ride it down there, we did Gus, to bring, bring you back by.
On the handlebars?
Yeah. Well. We, we know, we got, this is a minor, we've got transportation funds that we've got to, see, I, I'm like, I'm kinda like Andy on, like, twenty-two, we can't, I thought, I'm, I'm not conservative, but the transportation sales tax, I don't, could be sick, could be spent with anything referring to the transportation.
And we, and that's what MML told me, we need to talk with them, and I would imagine the difference between what Travis is coming up with and what MML is coming up with is Travis is looking at, this is what statute says. MML is probably saying, this is what the case law says that interprets those statutes, and this is what we, we know we can do, and we've done in cities. I'm not saying Travis is wrong, I'm just, I'm just saying. He, well, he's, he's got a narrow view, perhaps based on.
And I think Travis, if you'll read the first, the one from today, makes a comment about some of the stuff that was put out by the alderman at the time, said they would not buy vehicles. That was in a news release that was put out by the city, and I think that's where he's coming from on that.
And, and maybe we should stick with their word, but they didn't anticipate future needs.
Well, you're saying that whenever they, I said, it's in sales tax.
Yes.
That they would not, they also, well, the asphalt, I believe, uh, in the.
No, not at this sales tax, no, this is, this was, that was a long time ago, yeah. That was before me.
I mean, another thing we might consider at the next election, when we put it on the ballot, that we, we change our transportation fund and our infrastructure fund as a general revenue.
I believe you will. Believe you will, I don't think, you know, that's.
I look at his wish list, though.
Just for transportation.
And I think it's an issue of credibility, 'cause on average, we lose electricity about three or four days maximum a year, and for the chief to cut a twenty-five thousand dollar generator on this, needs about that flat.
Well, it is.
Because that's not going.
Especially when it's four-nine-one-one dispersed, and they've got the generators, and they're operated, I mean, you may have to get that air actually. Oh, Michael Falm records, twenty-five grand, that's, you know, what's that?
And, and that's something I told Sam I'd like to have, uh, and, and that's based on the fact that, well, we had one in city hall, you know, that's, we had one there that could service both the fire station and the police station, but my thought in that vein was that you get a grant to buy one, nothing that would, that we never conceived to.
To spend. Well, I don't, I don't understand where they want it.
When the tornado came through, and I'll tell you my perspective on that, uh, we all went down to the, the site, and, and we had Jay Nixon come in, and we had Vicky Hartson come in from Washington, D.C., and they all flew in their aides, and generals from Washington, D.C. came, and all this, and they asked, is there anything we can get for you, for you people? And I said, yeah, generator for our police station. And then their response later that afternoon was, well, it seems like they're gonna have electricity on here pretty soon, so it didn't seem to be a really legitimate priority.
The cameras went off.
Yeah, the photo.
But, but what it said to me, they spent a lot of money bringing people here to say, yeah, things are pretty torn up, but when the rubber met the road, nothing.
See, I don't think Roger is gonna answer that, he doesn't honestly.
He doesn't need it.
I think, you know, some department here are, are being a little better at helping us manage the money than ever. I think, you know, some departments here are, are being a little better at helping us manage the money than ever.
I think that's gonna be a part of our job in the future. And, and, yeah, and the bottom line, don't, don't look at what they put on their wish list as, as past indicators of management. Look at how they managed and what they spent, and, and a good example, and I, and I don't mean to knock our chief of police, or give anyone ammunition, but he, he wanted a computer program to run his department, and it would've been wonderful, because it's the same thing that the sheriff's department uses, and it's fully integratable and all this good stuff, and they can share with all these other law enforcement, blah, 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 Sam never figured out how to use it. And, and then we needed to pay a ton of money to upgrade it and keep it updated, and this and that and the other, and Sam decided, after we spent a lot of money on it, well, I don't want it anymore.
Twenty-four thousand more.
I wanna go back to, to what I had.
Our payroll, the payroll for the city as it stands is two-hundred and three thousand. That, now, that, in the, in the new budget, the budget for the election for the community, there is a two percent salary increase. And we've got some ways we need to look at individually to bring some of those salaries back up. We've got some pretty good gaps in the state department, difference between.
Way, way out before.
There is a portion for one of the guys who are there.
I agree. Everybody ten dollars a pound, man, everybody two percent, thirteen dollars a pound, man. It's thirty-six cents a pound, I'm not, I'm, it's a ten-six.
It's three-sixty. I can't say, so, the two percent's nice, but, and that's, and I'm not questioning the two percent, everybody needs it, there is purpose, everybody needs the two percent to live, we've got some people to work for the street department that is, I mean, they work hard, and they've been there quite a while, and they're in balance for what they, and they need to be, we need to think about as, as we be here, as we start working at the city, we need to look at the future. We've got to have somebody one of these days to walk into our organization, so we need to make sure that the man that we would like to see isn't made an exorbitant amount, but did it easily, so we don't lose a man that's very capable to step in our direction, like Roger, Roger worked for the city for thirty-seven, almost forty years.
Thirty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-seven.
Because I heard it.
I thought Wayne had a pretty good idea on that last year, though, he asked me how much money there was for races. Wayne said, everybody the same amount, instead of ten percent for everybody, everybody does the same amount. At least that gives us more spread of the point.
No, but we need to think about that, I mean, we need to think about these guys, and wanting to eat their good workers. Rogers, we were talking about the transport, the, the, the transfer, the, the local street to give Roger some of these. All these things we've got to look at before we have a budget, you know, we need to look at the overall picture. I mean, we're getting a pretty good discussion here tonight of what, what we think we need. It's, it's our wish list, it's to balance the budget and provide the most amount of money for employees and employees in the city.
People in the city of Buffalo, and they had sales tax, showed some confidence in us, and.
That's right.
Showed some confidence in the council, granted, Andrew did a lot of work on that, and he's to be commended, but we need.
We need to get the students and their money.
That's right. It's just like, I can't feel like to see why we need a telephone at the airport and at the, at the booth.
The abandoned.
I mean, the old abandoned center, because with everybody having cell phones, that's just, it showed four hundred dollars in there, that's just money, and there's gotta be, we've gotta pick out the waste, we don't want it people to do without, but if it's wasteful, we wanna get rid of it.
This is the only government where we got line item, I mean, not, you know, line item.
Well, let's do it, we're, we're, I guess, let's start with, we're in the book, our first department, we'll kinda start down here, one by one.
And did you guys wanna schedule some more meetings to get department heads in here?
Yeah, certainly.
Can we do that, or do we get the department?
Yeah, we can start cutting, cutting, and, and then when we bring them in, we'll say, look, we're, we're taking the phone out of your abandoned center. You're not gonna have a phone pool. All of our department heads have city phones, don't they, Debbie?
Eric has one, Sam has one, Roger has one, Wayne has one, Gus has one, Bobby has one, yes.
The mayor used to have one, right?
Well, these proposals, these, these are your figures, are they?
Those are based on historical, but on this year's numbers, yes.
I mean, I just don't know what we can do now, until we talk some.
Until we, the department, the department, we need to look at the whole department, we need to look at the payroll for that particular department, because when we look at their departments, or their salaries, what their insurance costs are, what their health insurance costs are, you know, it's hard to put a budget, because we can't put everything into the administration. I mean, if you hire two people, you've got weapons, you've got health insurance, and that's all gonna, you know.
Well, we have the administration right here, so we can start on page G F two.
Why is computer making this so difficult?
Um, because we have to rent our software from the vendor that we get it from, if they don't sell it to you.
Nowhere.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna guess Debbie's very good with our city honey, so there's probably not a whole lot in the administration that could be cut, I'm guessing.
I mean, I don't spend it if I don't need it, I don't.
Legal, legal and accounting, I mean, we're doing all kinds of.
Yeah, say, we're paying Travis a lot of money.
Well, that is, I mean, we talked, we mentioned, didn't we talk earlier that we were going to reconsider our accounting situation, because it was so late getting the accounting figures to us, that we might entertain pricing in the accounting service other than what we got?
Auditors.
Auditors, yeah, sorry. Yeah, because it was quite late, he sent some of the ads.
The, the audit is probably about seven thousand, eight thousand dollars of that, the legal and accounting. And then there's about two thousand dollars in election costs that we have to pay to the county clerk, and beyond that, it's what we pay Travis.
Twenty-four thousand more a year, approximately.
No, where's that at? Wayne, Wayne and I could pick up the slack a little bit.
I mean, and the thing is, you guys had a bargain with Lisa, because Lisa never wrote down the hours that she worked. She charged you twelve hundred dollars a month, period. Are you with me? I mean, so.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
You, I'm pretty sure it was twelve hundred dollars a month, that's all you paid her.
Correct.
Well, the lawsuit, I guess, is about. Has he broken it down? Do you have some feeling on what normal?
I mean, let me go just grab that file, because, I mean, he details his bill out every month.
Can you break down our legal in years past?
It was in twenty.
Must've twelve hundred a month.
Nine and twenty-ten, it was thirty thousand.
Several years.
Ten-eleven, it was forty thousand.
All the audiences.
Sometimes you get a table.
Well, evidently, it was.
And I've, I mean, we've actually been using a lot more lately than you had, so it's based on this more recent data. Yeah.
A hundred and what, twenty-five a year?
Yeah.
Hundred and twenty. Yeah, hundred and twenty.
Where are you getting a hundred? Where are you seeing the hours at?
Well, it just shows the amount, six hundred dollars for five hours, divided by five, it's six hundred, and the same is two times, is twenty-four, so five times that'd be hundred and twenty, so it's, he's built out.
Let me ask you this, do we pay him to come get you?
Yes.
What we use?
How did you know? Is it mileage?
Um, I think we only have to pay one way, I mean, because he lives in Dallas County, so I think. Most party charges us thirty miles, he did charge us one day to go to quarter seventy-two, but most parties, one way.
Yeah, for me, it works.
I don't know, I don't know that we're needing a company in the last week, where you discuss it in advance, and it's gonna be an issue.
He didn't have our work due, usually, unless we have questions for it, but.
Well, it's a major item.
Yeah.
It's a major item. Insurance is a major item.
Insurance, we've cut back on that.
Well, because that's kind of a place where it's always been a little padded, we just kinda rounded up. If we had to pay, say, for instance, a deductible, it would come out of that same line, so. And we have one, two, three, four lawsuits pending right now, I think, against us that, that the insurance company's defending.
What are the fringe benefits?
Um, fringe benefits includes health insurance, social security, workers' comp, drug screens, retirement.
There's not too much you can cut about your insurance or your health.
I mean, not have a carryover for the next year, I mean, because I notoriously don't buy it if I don't need it, so.
Don't worry, we're in. Yeah, but, yeah, but ninety-two thousand, that was fringe benefits, like health insurance and. See, that's fifty-three cents. Three thousand cents. That's it. You know, there's a drug dog, there's vehicle maintenance, so, I mean, there, there's some things we can't get out, like electricity, we gotta pay for electricity, and.
I'm telling you, I found it.
So, when, do you guys wanna, we kinda have about three weeks to get all the department heads in here. We probably need two nights for the department heads, and then one more night to go over stuff, so, what works for me? Is there another night this week that we can meet?
I'm available about any night.
Wednesday or Thursday to kinda.
Thursday, that is.
Okay.
Where's our meeting, Andrew?
I can't, Wednesday night.
Wednesday.
No, no, I can't Wednesday night. What, what meeting are you talking about?
I thought we had a meeting.
Oh, it's in September, September twenty.
Okay, so, next week we would have a meeting on the twenty-seventh, which is Monday, so what other nights?
Um, three to twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth.
Would be a Tuesday.
Twenty-eighth is Tuesday, twenty-ninth is Wednesday. No, our meeting's on Monday, the twenty-seventh, and we're not gonna have a whole lot on that.
As I say, if we don't have a whole lot on the agenda, maybe we could do budget after the regular meeting, or the special meeting.
Schedule a couple of department heads Monday, the twenty-seventh, and.
Do you have any, much for the agenda right now? Because I don't have anything written.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I have one thing.
Okay.
The website, he wants to come and show you what he's got, and then give ideas.
Have you seen the website?
Our current website? No, I, oh, I've seen it.
Obama Nation?
Yeah. It's a mess.
Yeah, I, I have seen it, I mean, not, not like today, but.
There's Obama stuff on our website, the city of Buffalo's website.
Obama Nation, it's, uh, sing the song, what's his name?
Obama Governor.
I don't know.
It's on our website.
We're getting ready to change that.
Whether we're for or against Obama.
Who's, who's, Senator second, Ray Stevens.
Oh, Ray Stevens.
That's on our website, how did that get on our website?
Don't ask me.
I would imagine D M knows we're getting a new website.
It's a pretty good website, it's got a lot of stuff.
No, we shut it down now, as is, I mean, just shut it.
I think he was using it to get an outline.
Well, I'm saying, if it's got that on it, we don't need any advertisement on our city website.
Yeah, we don't want Barack mad at us, he's gonna give us grants.
Well, I'm gonna call him, I'm sure he's watching it.
Do we have a drug dog?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cost a lot of feeding.
Usually, we went to the old.
What, the drug dog? In, in their own mind.
Oh. That's more of a vetner, and they're only does feeding, man.
Oh, the, the, the county still have their drug dog?
Yeah.
September third, Monday, December.
Who do you want to schedule?
Okay.
September third, Monday, that's more.
Well, it's Labor Day.
Oh, sorry, so, no.
How about next Monday night, scheduling, who, who do you want to schedule?
Uh, Sam and Gus.
How about, how about, how about the, how about Sam and, and the free, and the party?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's all the person, you get them out, you get them out.
Then we'll do Gus and Roger on Tuesday.
Twenty-seventh, right?
Okay, I can't do the twenty-eighth, but I can have somebody else here.
We do the, how about the twenty-ninth?
That's on Wednesday.
Yeah, that's.
Does that work for you?
I wouldn't make it, I mean, if I can't be here, I'm just gonna wait.
How about we shoot for twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth? Well, we want everyone here.
Well, I'll try to, but that's just, I mean, this is something we just need to get it now, and let's go forward.
Debbie's got what you're doing with that.
Twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, yeah, twenty-ninth.
That's right, I mean, if I said that.
Yeah, we're just gonna do.
And, Andy, what do you think about, like, the police department, because we wouldn't, these are the two that we're gonna do first, is the fire department and the police department, and have their entire expenditures, you know, I mean, all that, we can't approve anything, we can cut some, we'll have to go back in, and we'll get it all together to make some cuts if we have to, but I'd kinda like to know what the police department costs, you know, what it costs in that building to run a police department, gasoline, and a lighthouse. Their income doesn't make a difference, it was, we go to send a man down the water, busy, so, but I mean, I'd like to look at, to see what that department costs, if we're gonna cut, we need to cut, we need to look at the fire department, we need to see what, what are possible, do volunteer firemen have run? And that's just a guess, because the more fires you have, the more you're gonna, so that has to be better, a fairer, larger amount than, than the actual is, because of that, you make, make the work every night for six minutes or not.
They were, they were eleven in the day, they were fired, Buffalo City had.
So, do we have limits on how far? I mean, does our fire departments, are they required to respond wherever, at any time? How's that work?
I thought, Jesse, you addressed that.
We addressed that one.
We did? When I was here?
The mutual aid, according to the mutual aid agreements that we have, we respond, period.
Okay.
The only thing that you've got to remember, that if they jerk that truck out of here and we burn a building down, while they're going to Lewisburg.
Yeah.
Our rates will go completely outside, where we really not, to get a class seven fire department rating, the, the division says you don't take your trucks out of your corporate city limits.
So, do you currently do that? Because that was something that I was gonna bring up for the fire department, was I just recently learned about insurance rates related to the fire department.
And we do that.
Wouldn't that be benefit our citizens, if we get all lower issues, insurance?
Well, you're not gonna get much lower, but you sure get.
We're class six, right, with thirty-one miles.
Yeah, we're class six, and, and if we, if we would have run to Lewisburg, and our trucks weren't here, and our, and our chief was not here at that night, we'd probably be looking at a ten, they'd criticize.
That's what it takes. That's what it takes out, that's, that's what it's been. Yep.
That's your mind. When our chief then should take our.
The only exception to that would be like my department, because what's happened over the years, is I've ended up with stuff that nobody else knows.
Go to one of these volunteer fire departments, start in that mutual aid, because I know they've been in my house.
We used to break it up between departments, and everybody would be, I don't mind, so sixteen percent, what should be five percent? And I was just like, forget it, we're just gonna. And then, you know, the legal, that's our city, that, yeah, he works for all the departments, we don't break his bill, and we just take it, have that. And so, yes, really, that, that tells you what cost to operate each department. The essential would be, like I said, my department is really just from here, is what costs your, does that make sense? My department starts here, and really ends here, because I can't control those two, like, those two numbers right there.
Move all their equipment to Buffalo.
This is all I can control.
We've been there.
Yes, besides the.
We've been to Buffalo.
Does that make sense? But for every department, that would be true, because I'm the only one who takes expenses from other people.
On the house fire, where we've got more equipment than we've got personnel.
There's little grass fires.
And that's really what they're spending.
They took the pumper, so it's, it's someone's house, maybe. And I understand it, and they may firm a military down at all, so.
I don't like that.
And that's where all, try to get some numbers together, come back, what Jess is wanting, and break down by the front, on more than standing, a little business specific.
Because I wouldn't let him take a truck out.
When I achieve.
Yeah, yeah, no, that is correct.
When I achieve, I, I'm gonna go and someone's life to the manager, I had to be afraid, they know, if you didn't, that's, that's.
And I can do that for you fairly simply, you need to get it tomorrow. I have our, I can do that only if you need me to, bridge the mark, it wouldn't take very much, because everything's in the spreadsheet.
Everybody will come back and tell you.
Okay, I'll, I'll get it for you tomorrow.
Yep, thank you.
Yes.
And it's nice to give, you know, we are the county seat town, and we do have the best equipment. But it's still kind of better to leave our taxpayers who pay for the equipment without any protection.
On the other hand, though, what's, pathetically, our guys get there real quick, and only fifteen percent of a house is burned. It's still gonna, by and large, be a total loss, isn't it?
Sure.
And what's it matter if something, we'd probably prefer something burned to the foundation.
It's a volunteer, garbman's, meat alley.
I know, but we, we are better off with something burned to the foundations than.
Well, sure, we're better off with ninety-five percent of the house is in town burned, because then we don't have to go back and re-burn.
So, maybe mutually, it's helping.
But we still have fight, does that?
Well, I'm saying that if this happens, and we go to town, there's highly probability of having a major fire one of these days. And above, it will take half of this to come down.
I thought that when we talked about the mutual aid, that they talked, they said that they only responded if the office, like, the officer called for backup. Is that right? And I.
You're talking police department, fire departments.
I know, I was just getting ready to transition that.
They're entirely, they're entirely too different.
So, the fire department, they would respond to a call no matter what. It wouldn't be, we need backup, it's, it would be, there's a fire, and so then we.
Even if it's the, the, uh, Midnight or Greenwich Fire Department, or Southern District, or.
So, they don't have to call for backup, they just hear the call and they go, our fire department.
Whatever nine-one-one dispatches, it all comes from nine-one-one. Nine, nine-one-one dispatches, and everybody listens. If nine-one-one did not dispatch Buffalo, Buffalo Fire Department to a fire, they won't respond. Now, how he gets that much authority, if nine-one-one dispatch our equipment, I don't know.
If nine-one-one dispatches, city, they go, turn, turn all the way to Elridge, way north of Atlanta.
But then I think, I, I think the, the chief has got to start learning a little self-discretion when he takes our equipment out. If he wrecks that piece of equipment out there on D Highway.
What's that now?
If he wrecks a piece of our equipment, going, if he, if he wrecks a piece of our equipment, our fire truck. And totals it out, going to a fire, that leaves us one piece of equipment short.
Well, we have insurance, so.
Everybody else does too. But you, but you, you mess with, with the fire department insurance company, and try to get that truck replaced within a reasonable length of time.
It was out of district, it was out of district.
I mean, they don't pay the claim, but I'm saying, it's not, it's not that the insurance company's not gonna pay it, it's that we're gonna be down without that piece of equipment.
And that's where we benefit mutually.
You know, is there a guarantee that if this court, if the city hall catches on fire, that somebody besides Buffalo will be there?
No, I mean, you should, you should.
It's a, it's a written, it's a written piece of paper.
Attorneys call out a contract.
This is a contract.
Wow.
Buffalo Rule will be there.
Well, Buffalo Rule, though, but I'm saying if it was half the town, and we, and we lose the main pumper.
We're done.
Oh, we're done, we just watch it burn.
Most, most of all.
Because nobody's got the pumbers to work, to, to, to hit a hydrant and hook up to it and pump water out of it.
Well, there's about two pumper now.
Yeah, and can we go ahead, I don't think Bobby will take very long, can we go ahead and pull him on next Monday, too?
Sure.
For the parks? That way, we can split in between the, I mean, the two meetings. It would be Bobby, Sam, and Eric for next Monday, the twenty-seventh, and I'll get the breakdown like Jess is wanting. That'll give me plenty of time to get that done. And then August twenty-ninth, we'll do Roger, Lynn, and Gus.
You know, we could dissolve the park department, and just cross our fingers with the Y picks up on it. And just cross our fingers with the Y picks up on it.
Well, I don't think we can, it would be nice to go ahead and, I don't admit, because even, my understanding of Y. It's hearsay, I'm not involved in the discussions, but I thought that they wanted us to reimburse them for some money. I mean, it wasn't just a takeover, am I right, Eddie?
Yeah, they, they want, they want, they want essentially what your pay is to go to them instead.
So, if we go ahead and bunch it in, and we've got an idea, we know whenever that comes push, comes shove, then that, that, oh. But now, Debbie, does, does it, girls here do the soccer program?
We don't, I'm, we just collect the money for it, I mean. Bobby runs it, I mean, they do coach pitch, so it's just organize the day to do that, organize the gangs and stuff.
Well, but, so the park department still needs to be budgeted, if we may keep it, we may get rid of it, but even if we get rid of it, it'd be nice next year not to have to budget much money for it.
Well, we'll have to budget money, I guess, to give the Y to make up for.
For what they lost, for what we're.
Yeah, that was the way I understood it, is they, they said they could save us a little money. I don't know what they mean by that.
Can I ask you, play up there?
Thousand dollars?
Play up there, or what, Eddie?
And you?
They, no, they never gave us any figures, they just.
I thought they didn't play up there.
When you do this budget, and when you give your figures for park departments, can you show us what it loses?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's a major item, we need to, let that lose us here.
What is it?
The park department, we need to see what it loses, how much, you know, what bottom line is, what it costs for chemicals.
So, does the.
Do we charge everything, uh, chemicals and everything to the pool?
Well, there are actually two departments, the park and the, the park system is separate from the pool, so it'll be pretty easy to get to those numbers.
But it's managed by the same.
Yeah, well, no, because we normally hire a manager for the pool, Bobby just kind of does the maintenance down there, so.
So, Bobby became a manager this year. Bobby became the manager this year.
For two.
We'll be there next year.
That's great.
But we've got to keep in mind, too, the park would be nice to get rid of the recycling and the pool and some of this stuff. People can't stay, oh, Buffalo, they've got a police department and a fire department, nothing else.
That's right.
Well, they'd say we gotta help the mayor.
Yeah.
I mean, our debt, but you know, if, if we didn't have animal control, this is, you know, I hadn't animal control.
What do you?
Well, we didn't treat anything bad.
No, Mayor, that is a good conversation.
It's ain't doing nothing, he's buried down there.
You have, you have way more, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was the guy that would get five hours, they had their ever dog, he turned into us.
So, he called, he went all the time thinking of that?
All over town, he went all over Canada, we got dogs into our, we lived up one day, and, and this is the truth. We had almost an eight hundred dollar dog drive for that one.
We can't do that now, but we have to do it legally.
You need to ask Rock and Jasper how that works. Is this.
I know how it worked.
Mr. Mayor, is this an official meeting?
Yeah. Is there a second? Call for a roll.
I don't have one.
All those in favor? All those in favor will stand up and walk out the door.